The pledge. Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Glad that everyone could make it to the regular scheduled Springfield Municipal Regional Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, July the first. Ms. Marle, if you'll call the roll.
Baggot?
Here.
Viv?
Here.
Boyd?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Horland?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Townsend?
Yeah.
Holland are present. We have a board.
Item 1.3, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the planning commission held on June 5th, 2025. So, the second. All in favor? Any opposed? Item 1.4, public comment. We have one gentleman registered to speak. Mr. John Cooper, if you would come to the microphone and state your name and you'll have two minutes to address the commission, sir.
Thank you. I'm John Cooper with the law firm Holland and Knight. I'm here on behalf of the owner and developer of the Springview Village project located off of William Batson Parkway and Old Highway 431. There are three items on your agenda. One of them's on public hearing. We're seeking approval of the finer, final master development plan for the PUD and the preliminary plat for Phase 1. The final master development plan is for a mixture of single-family, townhomes, cottages, and multifamily. The Phase 1 preliminary plat is for the single-family portion. We have Renee Isaacs from the development team here with us, as well as Hunter Dale, the civil engineer, and Lindsay Walker, the traffic engineer. We're happy to answer any questions as those items come up. We'd like to thank planning staff for their work reviewing the plans and, as we work through the comments, we believe we submitted plans that address all of the legal requirements for approval tonight. And again, we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.5, public hearing. If you would like to speak to one of these as they are called, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, and you will have two minutes to address the commission. Item 1.5.1, rezoning request for property at 967 North Brown Street. Anyone like to speak to that? We will close that portion and we'll move to the next one. Item 1.5.3, zoning ordinance amending a section of 11-201 entitled "Nonconforming Issue", "Nonconforming Uses". If anyone would like to speak to that. We'll close that portion and move to the last one. Item 1.5.4, preliminary plat for Springview Village Phase 1. Anyone speak to that? This time, we will close the public hearing. Item 2.0, new business. 2.1, discuss and possibly take action on a request to rezone property at 967 North Brown Street map 080K, be parcel 049.00 from R10 to MRO. We have a motion and a second to put this item on the floor.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Durrell?
Good evening, commissioners. First on the agenda tonight is a proposed rezoning for property located at 967 North Brown Street. Lynn West, the applicant, has petitioned for a rezoning of approximately 0.65 acres at the northwest corner of Fifth Avenue East and North Brown Street. The request is to change the zoning from R10 medium-density residential to MRO multiple residential and office district. This request is intended to improve the property's marketability by allowing a broader mix of uses. According to the future land use map adopted as part of the Springfield 2044 Comprehensive Plan for Growth, this site is designated for high-density residential use. While the MRO district does allow for both residential and office uses, and the property is adjacent to other parcels already zoned MRO, the introduction of a commercial component does represent a slight deviation from the comprehensive plan. That said, the request promotes zoning continuity across the block and provides opportunity to develop a higher-density mixed-use project in a location that is near the city's central core. This sort of development is consistent with the city's comprehensive planning goals as they relate to land use. City staff recommends approval of the rezoning request based on the following findings. Number one, the MRO zoning district allows for a mix of uses that remain compatible with adjacent zoning patterns. Number two, the request advances the city's goals to encourage housing diversity and promote the reinvestment of underutilized parcels near the urban core. And number three, while there is a minor inconsistency with the future land use map, the proximity to similar zoning and the benefits of redevelopment potential support the proposed change. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, along with any of the representatives from departments here tonight.
With the comprehensive plan, because the adjacent property is already being MRO, why was this not considered to be potentially MRO as well?
That is a question that I do not have the answer to. Dave Brewer, do you know?
I mean, you got a natural divider with the Wilson Street on the other side, or Brown Street, one or the other.
Yeah, Brown.
The short answer is, is that our consultants sometimes just took the existing zoning and did not foresee a use other than what it was.
The office component is very highly likely on that track, track and lane anyway, just because of proximity to the jail. But there'll be, there'll be probably a site plan review then if there is a commercial request at some point in time.
Yes, if there's a commercial request, well, even if, ultimately, staff will review whatever gets submitted. Depending on the size of the project, it may or may not come back before this board. However, if you would like to see whatever comes back, I can certainly bring it forward for your review and approval. I don't, I don't know if the intent is to develop each of those parcels individually or for somebody to get together and treat them as one development, but it will complete the block, so to speak. And this parcel is actually, if you're at the intersection of Memorial and Fifth, you can see to this parcel from that intersection. So, it is directly across from the jail.
Any further questions?
Any negative feedback from people?
I haven't gotten any feedback on this one. Signs were posted.
All we've got is letter and mail, so we need to be up here for experience. That's the residential that, uh, negative up there. They don't think the.
Wilson Street's got all the business, it's not brown.
And that's Ms. Marle.
Not her, everybody.
And that's basing a bit of that.
I didn't receive any phone calls. I didn't receive any emails.
Any further questions?
Well, it's all brown, you can come in offices like Wilson, yes.
And plus, it's very involved in, it's one track and lane, it ain't two separate lots there. It's one flat lane. And it's two places sitting on it, one piece of property. It's a trailer and a house, but they combined on one lot.
It is being presented as one lot.
Okay.
Parcel 49.
Okay. Any further questions for Ms. Durrell?
So, if you rezone this, does that mean that that property can be turned in like Wilson Street, without the offices and all that stuff? And a parking complex, yeah.
I mean, I think it's enough building, enough room to cover any office spaces and stuff.
You know, we bought our homes on the other side, but it's residential, it was peaceful, and we had all the traffic on Wilson Street.
Any further questions for Ms. Durrell?
This lady's been in with the commissioner down there, over, on Brown Street, about Pickle Street, down 100 miles an hour down Brown Street. And they tell us, get a tag number.
Any further questions? Do you have a motion?
I hear them speaking, but did they not get a, a public hearing?
Every adjacent property owner was mailed a letter. I'll be happy to provide a copy of the letter if you'd like to see what it stated. But if the letter directs them to reach out to my office if there's questions or concerns.
So, you are, you are aware that you have to have that in before a certain time?
No, I'm not really, because this is the first time we are in the building.
Yeah. We own our, we own our homes for years, and first time we've heard that, you know, so.
And we're scanning for, if we received a letter, we would purchase the home there. And if we knew that this was going to happen, we probably wouldn't have purchased that home.
Mr. Cooper?
Could they not have spoke during the public hearing?
Yes, sir. They, they, you had an opportunity to, to address the commission during the, the public hearing part of, of the agenda.
Well, for those people like us, I'm not giving you more things. I see the letters saying, you got any questions? Uh, our questions, I'm talking, answers just you, like me, like you said.
Yeah, that's why we're all here.
That's why we all.
Sir, that's not how this works.
And I don't understand why y'all keep rezoning stuff in the residential to commercial.
Yes, so this, we're not going to go down that path. That's not what this meeting is for, sir.
Well, that's what they're trying to resume their property for.
Yeah, but it's not a Q and A session. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Durrell while she's at the microphone?
Mr. Chairman, this property meets the requirements based upon the request that is being made?
Yes, sir.
As a result, I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ellis, if you'll call for the vote, please.
Briggs?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Viv?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yeah.
Greg?
Yes.
I feel a little uncomfortable with this situation. I understand where we are at. I don't know if I can just say no or why?
You can just say no.
Okay. No.
Passes with eight.
Item 2.3, discuss and possibly take action on amendments to the city of Springfield's zoning ordinance by amending section 11-1201 entitled "Nonconforming Uses".
That one's been pulled.
That one got pulled this afternoon. Did I, I don't remember if I sent an email about that or not. I did send an email, okay. Late in the day, we decided to defer that until next month.
That's my fault. 2.4, discuss and possibly take action on final master development plan, FMDP, for Springview Village, a planned unit development located off William Batson Parkway and Old Highway 431. We have a motion and a second to put this item on the floor.
Second.
And a second.
Second.
Ms. Durrell?
Next on the agenda tonight is the final master development plan for Springview Village. This request comes from Hunter Dale, the authorized agent for the development. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of William Batson Parkway and Old US Highway 431. The property is zoned R7 PUD, with the planned unit development originally having been approved on June 17th, 2021. The site encompasses approximately 95.7 acres and proposes a total of 568 dwelling units, broken down as 177 single-family lots, 30 detached cottage-style units, approximately 96 townhouses, and approximately 265 apartment-style units. The proposed density is 5.94 units per acre, which remains within the allowable maximum of 6.22 units per acre under the R7 PUD designation. The plan also includes approximately 15.1 acres of open space, or about 16% of the site area, meeting the city's open space requirements. The final master development plan is being resubmitted for approval because the previously vested rights have expired, excuse me, have expired. While the project was originally approved in 2021, the developer did not commence site work or obtain necessary permits within the required timeframe. As a result, per the Vested Property Rights Act, a new approval is now required. The revised plan is substantially the same in layout, design, and character as what was previously approved. It continues to meet or exceed the city's expectations in terms of density, open space preservation, and housing diversity. City staff recommends approval of the final master development plan for Springview Village based on the following findings. One, the revised plan is consistent with the scale and intent of the previously approved plan. Two, the developer meets or exceeds current zoning and subdivision standards. Three, the proposed density remains within allowable limits under the R7 PUD zoning. And four, the proposal advances key objectives of the comprehensive plan, including the creation of a diverse housing mix and the integration of amenities and meaningful open spaces into new developments. In addition to city staff, Mr. Hunter Dale and other representatives from the development team are here tonight and hap, and happy to answer any specific questions regarding the plan. And I'm going to fix that. Somebody got it fixed. Perfect.
So, you don't have any questions for the developers as they are all present?
I do. I don't know who I should direct the question to. May, perhaps we'll start with you and if you decide it's not.
It may not be. My name's Hunter Dale with Dale &amp; Associates, 516 Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee. Prepared the plans, preliminary plat, all that stuff. So, I should be able to try to answer, but we've got a lot of people here too, so.
So, my question is just the overall scope, actually. As I was reviewing some of the documents and back and forth with staff, it's my understanding that we're only looking at a small portion of this, right, which will be Phase 1?
No, no, we're, we're looking at approving the, the master development plan, and then we will approve Phase 1.
Okay, so, so that's 2.5, so I guess, okay.
Do you have a question on the?
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
So, in relation to that?
Yep.
I guess what I would like to understand is how you see all the faces happening?
Sure.
What's that timeframe?
Yep.
And I know, you know, nothing, nothing is set in stone at this point, but I believe you can at least give us some kind of estimation.
Yeah, no, so I think on the cover, we tried to roughen a schedule. There's a lot of information on this, so. Preliminary development schedule, that intent would be to get construction drawings for Phase 1 wrapped up this summer and fall to start work. The idea would be to try to build the residential single-family with the public roads first so that we can generate plats for the multifamily, and then you can apply for site plans individually at that point for the multifamily. So, that's kind of the schedule. Now, we anticipate two phases for single-family. Section 1 is going to make both entrances for like fire access, extend public water, kind of make sure it's, the bones are set up. And then Phase 2 would extend kind of southeast with some additional plat parcels for the multifamily. And then once, it gets a little tricky with stuff like this when it's multiple types, right? So, you've got public roads, single-family, and then parcels for multifamily. Those parcels have to be created through the plats before you can pull site plans. So, single-family, plats, then individual site plans for multifamily would be the intent. Now, how this multifamily is going to shake out is where it gets a little trickier. That comes into markets and construction costs and how many units people want to take down at once. And that's an unknown. I don't know how long. But I think, right now, it's anticipated around 2029, 2030 would be like the tail end of it. But I would anticipate the next two to three years would be mostly the, the single-family stuff.
So, the first phase?
First phase would be within the next year to two, you know? I don't know exactly how long it's going to take to build. But I think the anticipated start time would be spring of 2026. And then, you know, how long it takes to build, we don't know. And then Phase 2 would come after that.
Okay.
Any other questions while he's at the microphone?
So, you think the Phase 2 would come after the 2026?
Yeah, so.
That would be the multifamily type homes?
No, that would be the second phase of single-family.
Yeah, the second phase.
Correct. Of the single-family.
Of the single-family?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the.
Multifamily coming in first?
Multifamily's coming in last, correct?
Usually, I mean, it, again, it's going to be a function of the plats, right? So, single-family is when you dedicate all your public roads, generate parcels so that someone can then pull a site plan for multifamily. So, traditionally, we would build the public roads in the single-family first, plat off the parcels, so that then someone can pull site plans for the multifamily. So, the intent would be roads are mostly built, and then you do the multifamily after that.
Okay, I have another question.
Yep.
So, I was looking at the back and forth, Springview Village city comments, it was provided there.
Sure.
And so, I'm just trying to find a little more, understand a little more context to this, because I don't know if you've seen how development and how discussions have gone here in the past few months, but we, we have a very passionate.
Sure.
Community with lots of questions, and we get scared, we get worried, we get concerned when we hear big numbers.
Sure.
So, we want to make sure that we understand when this is all coming, that it's not coming all at once.
No.
And also, that, okay, you've dedicated this land, but what if something doesn't work? Like what you're saying, we don't know how or long it's going to take to get built. Are you just going to fold and leave? That's kind of the worry that people have.
Right.
So, here's the question. I kind of want to understand this better.
Yep.
I'm taking the notes of the person, the engineer who responded. The intent here is to plat all parcels, single-family and multifamily, to generate lots that could be transferred to either individual home builders or other entities. So, for single-family or for other entities for multifamily. However, the developer is aware that these lots or parcels would need to be formally recorded on the front end, which is the reasoning behind focusing on the single-family public right of way, as you mentioned, all of that.
Correct.
So, I guess my concern here is, and I'm, and I'm fairly new to this, so forgive me if I ask a question that I should already know the answer to, but it sounds like we have the developer and the primary owner of this, but then somebody comes about like a home builder or a different builder.
Sure.
So, to, to, to the public, that gets kind of confusing. So, maybe you could walk me through that more so I can understand.
Yeah, so usually for residential, the developer will be, depending on what kind of developer they are, some developers are home builders, some developers are just developers, right? But a development will typically, for a developer, be building the public infrastructure to support a residential use in the future. And that would mean building all the public roads, bonding them, plating them, basically setting the bones for future construction, whether that's a single-family home or multifamily. And so, at that point, the developer can, one, hire builder to build the homes, sell the homes, or a home builder comes and buys a few lots and then builds homes on it. And so, you know, we don't know what the building permit part would be, but I would say the most disruptive part as far as mass earthwork, big trucks, utilities, that's going to be all the bones that would happen by the developer. You know, at that point, after that would be individual home builders framing and stuff like that. So, yes, it's a lot of work, but it's not tearing up roads and things at that point. But that is usually how it works. Public roads, parcels are generated, home builders get to buy the lots, build the homes, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions while he's at the microphone?
How much overall change was made between this master as opposed to the original?
Nothing. I, I made it look a little prettier. I put some more graphics for trees. Actually, you know what? There was, I'm looking at it now, so originally, the entrance off of Old 431, that road alignment up to the roundabout changed slightly because we had a jurisdictional determination done for that stream, and that road was crossing that, there was like a branch, and it was crossing, and to build that over two streams just makes it, you can't really cross a stream that way, so we shifted it to it would cross better.
It's crossing only one set, one side of the stream.
Right, now it's just crossing once, it's not crossing like a, a conveyance, this jurisdictional where it kind of tees. It was crossing where two places joined together. So, that's what we changed.
Was that change given to the, to the city?
Yes, it was. So, the, yeah, that's this one, that's this change. So, when we got this approved back in 2021, the alignment showed it slightly differently. Then when we submitted construction drawings, we revised it, so the city was aware of it. And now, we went ahead and updated this master development plan to match what we found when we were doing construction, you're correct. So, that, this master development plan has been updated, there are no changes after this one.
Approximately what size homes are these single-family that you're talking about?
I have no idea what the builders are going to do. I mean, 7,400 square feet, but I don't know what the, the lots are about seven, 400 square feet, or seven lots. Setbacks are six feet, 20 and 20. So, I think that's about 3,000 square foot total building area, something like that. But I don't know how big these homes are going to be. I can't.
So, basically then, the way I'm understanding, you may have one man go in there and build some really nice brick houses, and you may have another man go in there and build some blowdown houses.
Yeah, I mean, it just depends. So, again, master development plan is just the, the zoning and then, or not the zoning, the concept plan to generate construction drawings. When it gets to final plat, HOA can handle some of those things, but for residential development, straight zone, it's very rare to include things like architectural elements. We're just generating property for people to build on at this point, right?
Well.
But if that was a concern, HOA documents would come later during a final plat that could address some of that.
So, then what are the drawings that we're looking at here? Because there's actual renderings of the houses.
Yeah, there was. That was, that was the, so that, they were, staff was giving, asking us to provide a general context for the multifamily. He was asking a question about the single-family.
So, they're not going to look similar?
I mean, that's what was, what was generated at the time. But again, you know, until someone pulls a building permit on it.
So, these drawings here that they've attached?
Right.
These are for multifamily, which.
Correct.
Probably not happen until 2029?
Correct. Yeah, usually don't provide our potential renderings for single-family due to property rights and individual homeowner buying that parcel. But multifamily is a little bit different, so we can provide stuff like that for them, for those. And John, you may need to step in at this point for that.
Mr. Cooper, if you'd step on the mic.
Thank you, it's John Cooper. So, the, the final master development plan, each city does it a little bit differently, but this is essentially your concept plan. And so, this is where you're saying, okay, this is the overall concept that's been laid out for the development. You talk about the phases and, and what goes where, when. When you come back for your final, you'll get a, you then get a preliminary plat, which we're trying to get for the first phase, then you have to come back and get a preliminary plat and a final plat. So, once you get to the final plat phase, that's where you will see more of the bait, you know, full design type thing than, than what you see on a concept plan.
Details come later. That's when you really have control over what it looks like.
Sounds good.
But he had made, excuse me, he made reference to brick and something different. I think that needs to, I started to think that that needs to be addressed early on, though, and not let it keep dragging out.
You can't do that with a, with a master plan.
I understand that, but it doesn't need to be the last meeting to, for us to go, yeah.
I'm just stating what the, what the rules say, that, what we're, what it is we're looking at as a, as a group.
Right.
We're, we're saying this overall master plan fits.
Right.
Fits the PUD.
Right.
We've seen it once, most, some of us, not all of us have seen it before, but the only change, the reason why I wanted to specify what was the difference between what we're seeing tonight and what we saw before.
When he made comment, he could start kind of down that road. That's all I'm referring to is, let's start down that road to see what they look like, is all I'm referring to.
You can ask, but they don't have to answer.
I, I understand that.
Because that's not part of what it is that they were, they are required to do it this morning.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, and I think we understand the requirements. I, I think Mr. Shaw and I, and Mr. Greg just are more, are newer to this for. I I think Mr. Sean and I and Mr. Greg just are more, are newer to this board. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, you know, we've seen the the trends that have transpired at previous meetings and we see where the concern is. We understand it's not a requirement, but we just want to be on record as showing concern about about these issues. And yes, when they are required, we will, we will certainly discuss them again, but we just wanted to express our concerns at this point in time.
And the concern being mostly like building materials, I think is what you're expressing.
The consistency.
Consistency.
Of the look of everything, if this is going to be one development. Am I speaking for you, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
No, because it's good for me to note that down.
I wish you'd speak up just a minute.
You can't hear me, so sorry. Ah, there we go. But yeah, no, that's, I can definitely take those notes down and communicate those. Consistency in building materials.
Do you have any further questions on the the master development plan? Do you have any further questions for him on that part of the agenda? I have a motion and a second to approve or not approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Ellis?
Thompson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Viv?
Yes.
Warland?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Pass the sign.
Item 2.5, discuss and possibly take action on a preliminary plat for Springview Village Phase One. Motion and a second for this.
Same move.
Ms. Durham?
This third item on tonight's agenda is the preliminary plat for Springview Village Phase One. Again, the applicant is Hunter Dale, who is serving as the authorized agent for the development. This first phase covers approximately 37.79 acres and represents the initial subdivision within the larger planned unit development known as Springview Village. The plat proposes 92 single family residential lots and two parcels reserved for future townhouse development. The layout is consistent with the approved master development plan and includes the initial framework for internal streets, utility easements, and stormwater management features that will support the long-term build out of the community. An updated version of the plat dated June 12, 2025, has been submitted and has addressed all staff comments. The plat that you see here is the one that is most up to date and addresses all of the comments. Civil engineering plans have also been submitted for review. However, the applicant was waiting a little bit to make sure where you were at in this process, where the planning commission was with this process before they addressed all of the comments. This phase helps establish a structured and orderly approach to residential growth while preserving flexibility for future phases. City staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following conditions. Number one, the final plat must be consistent with this approved preliminary plat. Number two, a recorded homeowners association declaration must be submitted to ensure long-term maintenance of amenities, common areas, and stormwater management devices, drain adjacements, or related infrastructure located outside the public right of way. And number three, all outstanding civil engineering comments must be fully addressed and approved before the city issues any grading or building permits. This plat represents a strong start to implementing the broad revision for Springview Village and aligns with the city's goals for managed, high-quality development. In addition to city staff, Mr. Hunter Dale, along with representatives from the development team, are available to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dale, he's at the microphone?
How long before you anticipate a final?
Want to get through construction drawings, there are some items, nothing significant is outstanding, but we wanted to just get through this first. I anticipate we will probably get that approved in the next few months, start construction in the spring. I mean, if if it takes 12 to 18 months to build, it'll probably come in. You usually want to do it after it's all built to reduce bonding. So I'd imagine they're going to want to do the roads and stuff before they do that.
Your road construction is going to be first?
Correct. We're trying to get off.
Both entrances?
Both entrances, public water, sewer.
Gas?
Yeah, gas, electric, all that stuff, yeah.
Will this mean electric underground?
Can I ask a quick question for staff? I noticed the conditions of approval, I think of the staff report was a little bit different than what you read off. So just want to make sure. Okay. Okay. So what is what you read should be the condition? Yeah, they're, the three are different in the report. Yeah, so in our report, it's got, one, any outstanding comments on civil construction plans must be fully addressed. Two, the final plat for Phase One shall be consistent with the approved preliminary plat and included documentation confirming dedication of all easements, rights of way, and common areas. And then three, the final plat shall not be approved until city staff receive a recorded homeowners association declaration. Okay, they're word, okay.
The three points are in different order.
Okay. Sorry, I was trying to follow.
Yeah, no, I should just copy and paste what I can.
And you will send us that HOA, correct?
When I get the HOA, absolutely, once staff has reviewed it, we'll be sure.
And will the HOA requirement be for the entire development? Or will there be a separate HOA agreement for each individual type of dwelling area?
So usually you'll you'll have separate HOAs per development type. So the first would be for the single family, because that's what's getting built first. You may have some shared amenities that all of the development can use. But each HOA will have its own obligations for that part of the development. And we have agreed with the conditions that the HOA documents will include provisions that prevent them from being essentially nullified. I mean, the the HOA will remain in place. We've also agreed that the HOA will be responsible for all of the stormwater infrastructure and thing that's, things that are put in like that so that it doesn't fall back on the city.
Does that include, will that take a bond to do that? Will it require a bond in order for the HOA pieces to make sure that it doesn't fall back on the city expense? It might not be a bad idea. It might be something that could be looked at, I don't know whether any other communities are doing that. I mean, that's a fear that some members of this board have when it comes to HOAs and the fact that some developments over time, the HOA has basically gone away, even though it's still there on paper and will always be on paper, but the city is going to.
With the maintenance on them.
Yeah, usually in residential construction, we'll see a bond placed during final plat if the stuff isn't built. And usually the bond is covering initial construction.
Understand it, I think we're talking. Understand it, we're talking these and roads and things like that. But when it comes to common space, that is not part of anything other than the HOA documents.
Yeah, it's interesting, I don't know how.
Please enlighten us.
I'll do my best. Hi, everybody, I'm Renee Isaacs, and I I usually try to avoid talking at these things, but I do want to address your comments specifically. When we do this, we typically, what hap, first of all, let me back up. What happens in that situation when the HOAs go away is because they don't have any money. And then if you do an assessment, people don't have the money to kick in. So the way to benefit from that not happening upfront is to not start the HOA off broke. So, for me, pardon me, I'm from the country, so just it is what it is. But if we we usually do, depending on the size, we start the account off between $50,000 to $100,000. So when you put that money in and you allow it to accrue, they're not broke. And then when the people do their HOA monthly fees or annual fees or however we set it up, then it bills up over time, because you shouldn't have any maintenance on HOA for quite some time. I mean, you might have some small cost increments, but not anything large.
I guess what he's talking about is like, who's taking care of mowing the common areas? Where's those funds coming from? Because over time, those will deplete, it doesn't matter that now you're money. You've got 15 acres or something that you're going to mow.
Right.
Or upkeep, that costs dollars.
Mm-hmm, so that's why we fund it to begin with, so that they're not, there's money in there. Because if you're, depending on what it's set at, if it's $50 or $100, it takes a lot of money to get that to where there's that initial push. So if you fund it to begin with, then it it grows rather quickly, you're building a base.
An HOA is only as good as the board.
Always.
So.
And unfortunately.
It makes common sense to say that the nicer the development, the chances are of having a stronger board.
Right.
So that's the reason why this group, I think, is very intent on us having as nice of developments as we can have in this in this city to support the city, so the HOAs can be profitable and can be longstanding and not go away like they have in some developments that the city has.
I agree. And and I'm going to say, which, you know, my partners may disagree with me for saying this, but, you know, in some instances like that, 10 or 15 years, we we as developers have no control over that. You know, we try in every way to make it where it can't be dissolved, but sometimes people just go, oh, we're not going to do it. And we we can't help that. But we can, on the front end, do everything we can to set it up to where it's not going to be like that. And we do, because we don't want to do anything that's not going to make the development successful, because that's our paw print on it. I hope that answers your question, does anybody else have any questions?
A crystal ball would be nice.
Wouldn't it? I don't think I'd be standing here trying to make any money. Well, y'all, does anybody else have any questions?
I I do not.
Okay, all right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Nobody will, I will. Based upon the request, I have moved approved.
Do we have a second?
So just to clarify, do you move with conditions?
Yeah.
With this conditional comment? Second.
Ms. Ellis?
Viv?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Warland?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Pass the sign.
Thank you. Item 3.0, Community Development Directors Report. Ms. Durham?
Okay, finally, I'd just like to provide a brief update on departmental activities and ongoing development reviews. First, the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet next Tuesday. There are two items on their agenda, both are related to requests for reductions in minimum yard setbacks. The specifics were in your agenda packet, they're on there as well. Staff continues to work on revisions to the zoning ordinance with the goal of improving clarity, usability, and alignment with the city's planning goals. We are actively evaluating amendments related to non-conforming uses. That one will come back to you next month. Landscaping requirements, signage regulations. We have talked about creation, creating a new zoning district, specifically speaking to multifamily developments, because the code right now does not really address anywhere that they're allowed. So we're, we've been looking at that. And then looking at some updates for state code compliance, specifically with permit and review fee justifications, which could potentially result in changes to some of those permit and review fees. And then the state has changed some language about vesting periods. And so we need to update code to reflect those vesting period changes. Several of you have expressed a preference for a hybrid training format. We're talking about the professional development that has to be done, combining both online and in-person sessions. I have selected some training videos and concurrently working to ensure they're all in a shareable format with questions embedded, so that you can get the most out of the material. Once those videos are watched, I think then we'll be able to narrow down the in-person training that needs to be done. However, I think that what I would like to do, unless there's a lot of, you know, general discussion about another format, is kind of a work session style where we kind of go through the process together and do a hands-on session of what do each of the departments look at? What happens when I get an email or I get a formal request for a site plan or a subdivision, something along those lines. And another issue that has come up lately is maybe the need for a work session to kind of generally talk about the zoning ordinance, to talk about the comprehensive plan, to talk about this board, this commission's goals for the city, what you would like to see. If that is something that this commission would like to do, I'm happy to facilitate a time, but I need somebody on this board to tell me that that's what you want to do. You can send me an email, you can tell me after the meeting today, you could tell me right now. But we can get a work session together where we can talk about where the city is going and how the comp plan and how the zoning ordinance impact development in the city.
A work session will go toward training credit?
Uh, I don't know, I might be able to look into making that work.
Then if you make that work, then I I say yes, let's do it.
Okay, I will see if I can find a way to combine the two.
I I do think it would be beneficial for the new commissioners on the board to understand how it all comes together.
I think so too, and I think that would alleviate some of the.
Know how it wouldn't be a training because you are training.
Okay, there's, I can't read that. Okay, I'm going to switch that. Okay, the last screen that you have before you tonight, and these were all in your agenda packet. There's a number of residential and commercial projects currently under review. New since last month, though, is a site plan submittal for a Panera Bread restaurant on Tom Austin Highway. The development tracker has been updated to show that location. It is on the El Altino Lot, the Mexican restaurant, it is going to be part of that parcel. Also displayed is a list of the recently approved projects. Notable under this list, Blackwood Farms was approved by city staff, and they are working toward doing what they need to do, probably doing what they need to do to do a pre-construction meeting and get started. So that's pretty much all I have. If you have any questions, I'm here for you, or you can always use the development tracker. I stole this one out of my last month's presentation, so, which it has been updated recently, so it is pretty current. Somebody asked me recently if we put every project on there, and I don't put everything on there that comes through my office. Pretty much, if it's over about four or five lots, it makes it up there. All site plans are making it up there, so all the commercial development is making it on there. But not every little residential neighborhood has it, because three, four infill lots here and there aren't really something that everybody wants to see. But if it is something that the board and the commission would like to see, I'll be happy to have staff update it for whatever projects we get. That's all I've got for this month.
Thank you, any further questions for Ms. Durham? I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.